Let's see. Ms. Escobedo Bedola, if you will, lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Student reports.
Okay. Hi, guys. Nazneen told me that she couldn't be here today. She's at the hospital sadly, but she sends her hellos. So, last week, FHS held their winter concert. I went for -- I couldn't stay for the whole thing, but I did go for a few minutes, and it was pretty awesome. I mean, all the hard work they put in really showed. So, the AP session, which was supposed to be on Saturday, I believe, it got postponed to a future date. I believe that's coming up soon as well. And again, these AP sessions are really beneficial. I've been to a few, and they really like put and like give you an edge in like the class you're taking. Last week also, FHS held on Wednesday, I believe. FHS held an ugly sweater day and also a door decorating day, like contest, in the same day. And it was, I think it was a success. The amount of ugly sweaters everywhere was pretty awesome. And the doors were awesome as well. Mrs. O'Neal's class won. Their door was pretty good, too. Yeah. And then, let's see, the school store website has, is up and running now, so it's pretty cool as well. Last week also, FHS announced it's John and Abigail Adams Scholars. It was pretty cool seeing how many, like, students there were there. It said, it really says a lot about the commitment, like, students at FHS have to their education, and it's pretty awesome. Also, the Renaissance Assembly is on Thursday, so I'm in the club, and we've been putting together this Renaissance Assembly for quite a bit, and I think it's gonna be pretty cool as well. And for the students with good grades, tennis, and some, and attitude. So, yeah, that's it. That's it for today.
Did anybody win the ugly sweater contest? Or is it, was it?
It was like a class thing, I believe, and...
You're not wearing one of them, are you? I couldn't miss this. I don't, you know, you know. But that's a good thing. That's not that ugly, I mean, is it?
Thank you.
Should I, should I?
It is an ugly sweater.
I should quit while I'm ahead, huh? Okay, all right.
While you're behind.
Moving right along, never mind.
All right. Yeah. The junior class one.
They did.
They had the most ugly sweaters. Yes, yes.
Next time, you're gonna take a picture, bring it in so we can see how ugly it is.
Of course.
Okay, good. Thank you.
No problem.
No School Committee Chair report. Resource Committee, Mr. Stevens.
We're going to be having a meeting of the Resource Committee on January 13th, and also the Building Committee.
That's, that was gonna be my next question to you as well.
On the 13th.
Okay, thank you.
What's the 11th or the 13th?
It's on my calendar. It might be. Okay.
I think it's, I think it's Wednesday.
It's Wednesday.
It's Wednesday, yeah, it's Wednesday. I don't remember.
Why was I thinking 13th?
13th of January, you're talking?
Yep. January.
Yeah.
11th?
It's 11th.
11th. 11th. 11th. Yeah, yeah. 10, 10 and 11.
Okay. Ms. Craig in Policy Committee.
So, you have, oh, let's see, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 policies before you for the second reading. Juana, if it's okay, you've done such wonderful work. We still have to have a policy meeting to review the school committee work, so we'll schedule that for the new year, and I'll be, we'll be in touch with Marissa and figure out when the three of us can get together, and then I'll, I'll meet with Paula and then get the next collection ready for review, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your productivity.
I'd just like to make a comment. What an outstanding job the Policy Committee has been doing on the policies.
A lot of work.
I agree.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Ms. LaBelle Pierce, Student Support Committee.
Nothing new to report?
Thank you. School Personnel Committee, that's me. Nothing to report. We're still, Mr. Jokel, we're still negotiating with nutrition, correct? Right. Thank you. What am I, next? Executive Committee? That's me again. What am I, everything, huh? Nothing to report there. Well, we already had the student report and the ugly sweater issue. Okay. Approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting, December 5th, 2016.
Second?
Motion been made, seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, thank you. No need for executive session, Superintendent? No. Any communications?
I've got a...
Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
So, I just wanted to let everyone know who's watching that Be Positive assists on several emergency pet food pantries. These are open to all area pet owners in need of pet food. Generally, after the holidays, there are, there are some strays that end up on the street if parents are, parents and families are in transition. People can go to the Cleggorn Neighborhood Center, which is 18 Fairmont Street in Fitchburg, or Ginny's Helping Hand, 52 Mechanic Street in Lemonster. And they can also be in touch with Sophie's Mission. Sophie's Mission will actually deliver pet food to folks, and their number is 978-728-9111. And you can find them on Facebook. You can find all of us on Facebook. The other issue is, the mayor has very kindly allowed me to briefly speak, so, about the Therapause Pet Calendar. So, we put together a pet calendar with all of our therapy pets, and the photos were taken by Ashley Green of the Sentinel and Enterprise, who also photographed more serious things for the Sentinel, but she photographed all of our pets, and the, the pets that are in this calendar are pets that our kids in school see and people at the Highlands and the Benchmark, living at Lemonster Crossing and the Ark of Opportunity Institute of Professional Practice, Manor on the Hill, Fitchburg Library every first Saturday, and they're wonderful photographs, and a lot of pictures were actually taken at Fitchburg Public Schools and Crocker Field and the Public Library and our public parks. So, these calendars are just 15 each, or two for 25. You can go to Shacks, Find Clothing on Main Street, or Mill Number 3 out in West Fitchburg, or you can go to Preppy Pet, which is on John Fitch Highway, and I think you can also go to Chibo. Or you can tag me, and I will get one to you. So, here, I'll pass this along so you guys can look. What I liked about this calendar is that these are pets that students get to see, and we actually had a benefactor give us some money, so we have been giving some of these calendars to the classrooms where we regularly appear. And that's just been eye-opening for children, because these animals, you know, that come in on leashes who are friendly and sweet, are now like part of their, literally part of their scenery. So, thank you, Ashley Green. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, for letting me talk about the Therapause Calendar.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Any questions? Next public comment. Do I see anyone that requires a moment to, a five-minute talk with us? Not seeing anyone? Mr., Mr.?
I would just like to make a couple of comments. This, this past week, Fitchburg lost a real friend, Mr. Al Sessino, who passed away this past week at 104. He was a teacher in the Fitchburg Public School system for four decades, in the 40s, the 50s, the 60s, the 70s. He was a physical education teacher. Al was the first coach of many of the outstanding athletes that went through the Fitchburg Public Schools. Al was the 5th and 6th grade phys ed teacher. He coached football, basketball, baseball also. He refereed all the games. He also taught me tennis at the old Bartley-Nolan School Gym. He was my phys ed teacher when I was in the 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th grade. He worked with me as a coworker in 1967, 68, at the Ashburnham Street School, where he was the physical education teacher. And when I was principal of Goodrich Elementary School, 1977, he was my phys ed teacher. And Al is in the Hall of Fame at Fitchburg High School, graduated Catholic University, is an outstanding football player, and he was very active right up until he just passed away. And Fitchburg really lost a wonderful teacher who really prepared the young people in Fitchburg, and me personally, I'll miss him a lot. And if I could just have a moment of silence for Mr. Sessino. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Is, Mr. Mayor, if you want to go on, you said that, I think you said the school store now has a website?
Yes.
Can you give that address? Because I've had people ask me, where do I get a sweatshirt, or where do I get something else, so that might be helpful to people at home.
I don't have the website on me, but...
So, if they go, how about if they go to the Fitchburg High School website? Does it, was there, would there be a link, do you think?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
We received the link through an email I got. Um, hold on. I think it's in, it's, um...
It should be part of the website, obviously.
I have the link. It's kind of extensive, but I, I thought it was on your site.
Did you find it on the website?
It's a, it, Mr. Roach sends out all those emails, so he has it in the...
Okay, then what I'll do is, maybe Deana, if you can get the link and put it up on the Fitchburg Public Schools website.
I think he also says you can, it's Mrs. Care who runs it.
Okay.
So, people can also contact Mrs. Care at the high school to place orders.
Perfect. Because it just so happens that this week I've had a couple of people say to me, where do you get Fitchburg, you know, athletic wear, or a sweatshirt, or something like that? So, it'd be nice to be able to direct them to that. If you, you've probably seen some of the postings, and it's been on the Long Joe Facebook page, who had a mysterious person that I found out was Jennifer. Because every day, I was seeing two or three new things going on at Long Joe that were on their Facebook page. And a number of those were by Becky Collo, who is their, their Ally STEM teacher, and just really exciting stuff happening every day there. So, I thought I would invite Becky to come with a couple of her students and talk about the work that you're doing there. I saw that there were the other names here, but I think you just have Jennifer Lee here with you tonight. But maybe talk about some of the things that are going on at Long Joe, which are very exciting, so. Becky?
For the setup, sorry.
I didn't know you had a PowerPoint, but if you want to talk slowly, I can get this going.
I'll talk this to you.
You can give people a little overview.
Yeah. I think that's exactly it.
Thanks.
Yeah.
So, we had started to look through this. Was there anything specific that jumped out at you as what was the most fun that we've done so far in this, this fall?
We prepared for the, for the STEM Day, which is coming up this Wednesday.
I'm sorry, can you say your name, please?
My name's Jennifer Lee.
Jennifer Lee, okay, great.
So, she said that probably the most exciting thing we've done this fall was getting ready for our STEM morning, which we're going to be having on Wednesday, so...
Pull down the mics. There you go.
All right.
So, they can hear you at home.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about it, what you're planning for your group?
Well, what I'm planning for my group is actually where, I'm in a group electrifying electromagnets, which is pretty much about making electromagnets and talking about how they actually work in the real world and all that.
So, then we also have another group that's working with a couple of other things about magnets. We have a group that has some motion detectors set up that are going to be talking about velocity and acceleration. We have spatial models. We have a group that's going to work with plant and animal cells with the microscopes, ecology games, an engineering challenge, and density in a tube. You've tried out a couple of those. What's been fun?
Well, I think density in a tube was pretty fun, because I'd like to see all the liquids flow and rise. Yeah. The magnets station, or, yeah, it was really awesome, because I could see the different uses of magnets in everyday life. Yeah.
So, how are electromagnets used in everyday life?
Well, I remember trains, like, with the tracks. I think that's how they work, actually.
Mm-hmm. How have you prepared? What do you, what do you do in class? Do you experiment?
Yes, we actually experiment. We're, we have different materials with batteries and wires and magnetic things, like, we use the nail to wrap, we use wires to wrap around the nails to actually make the electromagnet that are connected to batteries. We've been like experimenting with all that to make sure it actually works.
Great. And then you test it out on everybody on Wednesday, or show everybody?
Well, all the 6th graders, yes.
Have you talked about your experiences at the colleges and this college?
Oh, yeah, the colleges. Northeastern University in Boston was really fun, because we learned about circuits, snap circuits. WPI in Worcester was really fun, too, because that's where I actually learned the electromagnets, and my group and I were actually thinking about presenting that to the 6th graders. That's where we got the idea.
When do you go there? When do you get the chance to go to, so you went to Northeastern and WPI? When do you do that?
We did that in previous field trips that Mrs. Cole actually took us on. Yeah.
During the school day, or?
Yes, during the school day.
How many students go?
I have no idea, unfortunately, but the 7th and 8th graders classes in the Ally science.
As many as we could cram onto a bus, right?
Yes, yeah.
So, if I could just add, last year, you may remember, and that's, the Memorial Lab is where the snowflakes were printed. We wrote a grant for a life sciences lab at Long Joe, at Memorial, and at Fitchburg High. So, during the course of last year, organized materials, furniture, some of the room rehab. And then this year was the first year the staff and students have used those facilities. And so, what Becky and Jennifer?
Yes.
Are talking about is this Wednesday is kind of the introduction rollout of the Long Joe facility to other students in the school, staff, taking a look at. So, what, we haven't had a formal ribbon cutting yet, because in some cases, like with the snowflakes, we're still kind of vetting the equipment. But they're going to have their presentation Wednesday, and that's what they're talking about, the kinds of stations. But it's as a result of the life sciences grant. Big investment, big payoff.
Okay.
So, just a couple of slides here about what we've done so far this fall in the Ally program at Long Show. This was the trip to Northeastern that Jen was talking about. We had two hands-on workshops there, where they worked with solar panels and with electric circuits. And then when we came back to Long Show, that was actually the first day that we got to go into the lab and use some of the LabQuest probe ware. And they took what they had learned there, and we had some solar cells at Long Show, and we tried out parallel and series circuits, and a whole bunch of other experiments, whatever they could come up with that they wanted to test out with the solar panels and the voltage probes. Then we went to the Museum of Science and really focused on science in the park, which was kind of a follow-up of a unit that we had done last year on physics.
Yeah.
Which was a fun unit that we had done, and we took an online college class in physics last year, and then they made videos of their own ideas of the rules of physics. So, this was a follow-up to that. And then at WPI, this is where Jen's group took their idea, built on their idea here of electromagnets. It was their first time building the electromagnets. So, some college students at WPI taught them about that, and they were very impressed with our tour of the campus.
Could I ask you a question? So, is it the WPI students who have engineering ambassadors?
Yep.
So, this is a program that they do with other schools, or is it?
Yeah. Yep, yeah, this one's, WPI, it's actually right on their website. You can apply to go there and do a part of this engineering ambassadors. And engineering ambassadors is actually a program that a lot of colleges across the country have, and I think that they run different programs with them. I know that Tufts has one as well. They don't necessarily run the exact same program with them, but they all have this outreach and trying to get middle school and high school students interested in STEM topics. But for WPI, it is right on their website, so other schools can apply to, to go and do this trip. Through the Free to Learn Program at the New England Aquarium, again, right on their website, we applied for this. They gave us free tickets to the aquarium, and we went there at the end of our unit on evolution and adaptations. What's the best part of that? Tell us about that trip a little.
Well, first of all, we actually learned about adaptations, about all the different species of organisms that live in the ocean. The best part about it was actually you can walk it through and actually seeing the organisms. You actually found Dory and Nemo.
We definitely lucked out with the weather that day. I wasn't planning on having a trip in November and getting to be in beautiful, almost 80-degree weather out on the water eating lunch, but we lucked out.
Wow, that's great.
So, this is back at school, some of the different things that we've done with some of the equipment that we have there, and the new lab. We also have the new microscopes we've been using a lot as well. Our 3D printer isn't quite hooked up yet, but we've really been focusing on these LabQuest equipment.
The new lab is on the top floor, and if you're facing the school on the top left-hand corner, if you remember, we did a lot of work there. We took up the old floors, were damaged, and took out all the old equipment, put down a new linoleum floor, and really made it ready for a new...
Old cooking room?
Yeah.
Yeah, the old cooking room, yeah.
We've got, they got a 3D printer?
Mm-hmm. I think, how many schools now? A lot of our schools?
The labs. The, we bought them with the life science lab. And we just got a life science grant, the same grant for Goodrich.
Oh, great.
So, we'll be working on putting a lab into Goodrich.
That's great.
Yeah.
And we're very excited about it. We're still working on the electricity and the internet and everything set up for our 3D printer, so it's not completely hooked up yet, but...
Good.
Once we get there, we're very excited about that, too. This isn't something that Jen necessarily took part in, because this is a program that we had for the 5th graders this year. We had two traveling programs from the Museum of Science come in. So, they had a geology program where all of the 5th graders at Long Show worked through stations. Sally, you were able to come to that.
It was wonderful. This is really, really tremendous.
And then we also had them back for States of Matter, which was a whole presentation for the entire 5th grade, which was really nice, too. And then we're getting ready for our next event, is our STEM morning. There's our list of all the different workshops. The kids have completely put these things together, and it's all on them to decide what workshops they want to present, and they're going to do this for the 6th graders. We have the Museum of Science for the 5th grade, so the Ally kids are taking over and sharing their knowledge and excitement with the 6th graders.
That's great.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
How many students are in the Ally program there?
It's 42 right now.
Now, do you have to qualify? I mean, how's that work? You have to have a certain grade point average or something, or what?
I thought you were just...
Or if you're just interested, you can join.
It's more of a grade point average or interest of year-end test scores, year-end test scores, interest. We've had kids that we put in there that are doing really well in there that are kind of floundering a little bit, but they went all right.
Yeah.
And the hands-on stuff has been phenomenal. This is all Becky's planning. She's written all the grants. She's done all the really heavy lifting for all these extra programs coming in. Outstanding job.
So, would this be considered advanced?
Yeah, this is a pre...
This is, okay. Yeah.
And just to, so Becky mentioned this briefly, but last year, even in her absence, her students actually took an online physics class as kind of an experiment.
What grade?
6th, 7th, and 8th, actually, last year.
I was in the 6th grade at this time.
Oh, that's impressive.
They took an online physics class with Virginia, was it Virginia Tech that it was through?
Really?
And then...
Oh, just Virginia Tech?
Yeah. And then they also took a biology class, another college online class. Well, that was what they actually did while I was on maternity leave.
So, you don't, you don't get intimidated at all, do you?
And, and to, just looking forward, there's a request, and we run book studies with our faculty, and we do it through an online venue, so that there can be asynchronous discussion and posts. And Becky's volunteering to try to pilot that with students to see how, I don't want to say how young, how it goes, so there'll be opportunities to face-to-face and some online discussion, using a very interesting book called The Sixth Extinction. So, we're talking serious science content with some really dynamic, progressive methods with kids. Very interesting, much appreciated.
And if you remember, a couple of weeks ago, Crocker presented at a conference on student-centered learning. And really, this is what we're talking about. It's really talking about figuring out a way to hand the learning over to the students and find out what their interests are, and then just, and like you said, if you were away on maternity leave and they continued and did these, took these courses, that's the goal. That's the goal. And then now, the next thing with the 21st is they're going to be running these little workshops and teaching other students.
Questions?
Yes.
So, Becky, first of all, congratulations if you were on maternity leave, so there's a baby somewhere, right?
There's a baby at home.
But I just have a couple of questions. Like, so how do, do you, I know the Ally program is run in all of the venues, but how much coordination is there among the directors of it in each of the schools and sharing of ideas and information? So, that's my first part question. And I'm about to lose my mind on the second part question. Oh, how does it, how do you integrate what you do with the regular science teachers? And so, there isn't duplication of, I mean, it doesn't sound like anything you do would be duplicated, but maybe, but I'm just curious, like, what?
So, there is an Ally coach or an elementary honors academy, is what they're calling it at the elementary schools, teacher at each school, although I believe, is it Memorial right now we're looking for one still, or there isn't?
No.
McKay.
McKay is what we're looking, okay. So, we do see each other at the coaches' meetings once a month, as well as communicating here and there in between, but the positions are very different at the different schools. So, some, I'm actually, I don't duplicate what the other science teachers are doing because I am Jen's science teacher.
Okay.
So, all of these things that I'm doing is based on the standards as well. So, you know, we have all of our standards, and we talk about it all the time. Some of them we go through faster, so we can get to other applications of things, and some of them we do in more depth through the college classes or whatever else we're doing, but, so, in my position, I am their science teacher, whereas other schools, some of them, it's, there are parts that are pushed into classes, or parts where they're pulling out, parts where they're part of the specials or the Unified Arts and Science Department. So, they rotate through smaller groups of kids throughout the year. I'm not positive if they see all of the kids, or if...
Every school has their own model.
It's all very different, which makes it, would make it challenging for us to all be doing the same thing, or for us to necessarily come up with one program that we're all gonna do.
Would students who aren't in the Ally program see any of these applications, or?
So, that's what we're trying to do a lot, especially right now with the 5th and the 6th graders, so with the Museum of Science programs, things like that. That's for the entire 5th grade. This program that we're going to be running on Wednesday, the entire 6th grade will be coming through and seeing the 7th and 8th graders working on these things. I do also work with the other science teachers within our building and run the common planning time, so some of the ideas are shared there as well.
Yes, Andre.
Basically, you just described how we started the whole Advanced Academic Learning Initiative. You know, it was based on that model from, in Fairfax County, and it had these three components. Small groups, finding students who have an interest and are ready to excel. Then transferring that knowledge to a group of students to work with other students, or like you just said, working with the science teachers, and then getting them to learn how to slowly incorporate some of those things into their own classroom teaching. And then the third part is district-wide activities, which is when we have that evening of Ally, which is middle school and elementary and everything else. So as opposed to a strictly gifted and talented program where this small group of kids test in and that's it. They're the only ones that experience it. What changes is, you know, the direction of what gets focused on at different schools, depending on the interest of the particular teacher and their skills, who become the Ally teacher. And then at McKay Arts Academy, because they're an innovation school, they're able to develop, you know, their response totally separate because it's more developed at the school level. You did a good job explaining it.
There's a lot of different moving pieces there.
Yeah, right, yeah. But the enthusiasm is the thread that runs through the whole thing.
I feel a little silly before I said, is this for advanced students? Andre, just let me know what Ally means, Advanced Academic Learning Initiative. Thank you. Forgive me. I was going to ask that question. What does this acronym mean? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Becky. Really appreciate it. Thank you, Jen.
Nice job. Okay.
Thank you.
Long day for you.
Love your sweater.
Yeah, it's kind of ugly. It's okay.
Paul's going to give you a little bit of an update on the ESEA report card.
So there were two documents with the snowflake. The first is, looks like this, and it starts off, Dear School Committee Member or Dear Mayor. And every year about this time, by Title I Regulation, we need to distribute school. These are official school report cards found on the Department of Ed website. And there's an official district report card also found on the Department of Ed website. A copy will be sent to the Public Library and to Anna Farrell. And should there be a citizen who wants a copy, they're entitled to a hard copy, or they can get a copy of this at every school. So it just provides an overview of the required information through Title I. The school report card or the district report card itself provides information about how the district is doing overall as compared to other schools in the state. The achievement boxes over the course of a number of years in English, Language Arts, Math, and Science. Where our district places, again, it's the bottom, it looks like a sliding bar chart in, for our district in Massachusetts. And then there are two pages of various data points, average daily attendance, four- and five-year graduation rates, suspension rates, information about the district, and then the names of the schools. These should be going home. We printed five thousand copies of the school report cards because the Title I Regulations do require a hard copy, go home with every child in every school. And then they'll all be posted to the district website. The district report card is only going to public venues and posted on the website. If you'd like to discuss any of this information, or if you'd like to put it on an agenda in the future, or bring it to the subcommittee, that would be great. I wanted to bring it to your attention because it's going home. So if you have children, you might see a copy and wonder what it was, or you may have constituents who you talk to who wonder.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are we, are schools going to be presenting their review of any of?
In January.
Okay.
So the last, the second meeting in January and the two meetings in February.
Okay.
This is, this is really good information. I'm trying to think of how we could, would this be something that would be appropriate for executive session if we wanted to really discuss them in detail? Or is it something we?
You just discuss it in regular. Yeah, there's, this is all public information, so there's nothing here.
This is right off the Department of Ed's website?
Right, right, yeah.
And this is actually called the overview. It's only a couple of pages. The full district report card, which gives massive amounts of data, is probably fifteen pages long. So it's, we wouldn't make copies of that, but we could certainly, if you wanted to, bring it up, talk about, I could make copies for you. Again, if you wanted to do it as subcommittee work, just start with your call, your call, how you'd like to approach it.
Put it on the first January committee meeting for a little bit, a little of a deeper dive into it.
Yeah.
Sure.
Let me do that.
Okay.
Could you send the full report?
Absolutely.
That would be great.
Absolutely.
Good, yeah.
Do you want just the district? Or do you, would you like a copy of each of the?
I like the state comparison. That's what I was also, right?
Well, this gives you the state. My question is, would you like all of the schools as well?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. This one didn't really print out that well.
It's, we've been.
Is that, yeah.
That's how, it's very hard to manage the copies without darkening, and then it blurs the others, but we'll work on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Andre, are we going into the grants?
Grants and donations.
Okay, yep.
Donations, Christmas gifts for Fitchburg Public School students. You might have seen pictures of that. It was online, on Facebook, on Twitter. Unbelievable. I saw the room full of gifts, and it's from Matt Fournier, Managing Partners of Elite Construction and Design, and then Phil McSheehy, there's some other names.
Everybody has a copy.
Oh, you all have the handout.
You all. That's the second packet. And those were just delivered Friday at three-thirty, just inventoried today. So that's why it wasn't on your agenda before today.
So that, so thank you for that. Those will be distributed to all of the schools, and it's for a total cost of $3,077.
That's an incredible gift.
Incredible.
The things were beautiful, just really wonderful gifts. Going to be a lot of very, very happy students. And again, this is just another tribute to Fitchburg and the kind of giving. And that's not counting all the stuff that's going on in all of our schools across the district, where food is being prepared and handed out. Just a reminder also, the Goodrich Holiday Celebration, I think, is tomorrow.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, it's Wednesday, so that's something to keep in mind. We're recommending to submit the grant on youth opioid prevention. Some of our staff have been working on that. We've had a meeting, the police department is involved in that, and the other community partners. We're recommending that we accept the following grants. The first is Fitchburg Education Foundation for $75,000, contribution towards the early child literacy. The George Progen Foundation for $25,000, the Community Foundation for $25,000, and the George R. Wallace Foundation for $25,000. You received an update email from me today. We have finally reached our target for Footsteps to Brilliance. And we had a conference call with them this morning. We will be rolling out Footsteps to Brilliance in the school district first in January, and then planning a big citywide rollout of Footsteps to Brilliance in March. So tune in. I'll be contacting all of you on the different components. There's going to be a campaign. Basically, you know, my goal is, it's going to be Fitchburg, you know, literacy campaign for the city of Fitchburg. A literacy campaign, everybody focused on reading and writing and also. Should be exciting. I have to thank Bob for sticking with the money part of this. As you know, we've been, we've been piecemealing this together with $25,000 here and $30,000 there. And then Paula and Eva and Kathy Brady have done the yeoman's work of all the nitty-gritty of what would this mean and how would it be used. Our technology department has been involved on making sure that, you know, we can provide some technology to places that don't have it, but also helping to keep us asking all the right questions we need to ask. So we had a great meeting with the folks from Footsteps to Brilliance today. They're very excited, and they really are part of what we did. We were $45,000 short from what we needed, so they gave us a $45,000 grant. So we asked them what the grant was all about, and they said, well, we want to be able to use your data as a showcase, as an example, as we go out to other communities. And then I think I committed myself to being kind of a spokesperson for the work that we're doing here. But for $45,000, you know, what do you need us to do? We'll do it. But that's really what got us to the finish line of the $200,000. It's a five-year. It covers all the ZIP codes for five years. So all of our partners in private schools, Catholic schools, home daycares. And as they said today, anybody who goes off on vacation, just because they're out of the state or out of the city, they still have access to their account. And we will manage the Fitchburg Public School accounts, but then our community people will sign up individually on the website, and basically, they will be managing their own account. So we won't have to be a part of that, but the whole city will benefit from the data that's created, even though the data will only be in the aggregate. So we're going to be able to see how people were when they were starting, and especially this focus on maximizing vocabulary. How do we kind of work to close that gap that a lot of our students have in terms of vocabulary? So it's really amazing that we're finally here. It's been a three-year prospect. And then the rest of these are policies, so they're evident, and you'll probably be reading the description as you vote on them.
All right. How does the committee wish to proceed with the policies? Do we want to?
Just take them as one.
Take them as one?
Yeah.
Okay, right, so.
Why don't we do eighty-six and eighty-seven?
Okay. Action items, just take it that way. Sixteen dash seven eighty-six up through and including sixteen dash seven ninety-four. Approved the superintendent's recommendation to approve second reading of said policies of each one.
Make a motion.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, as you know, thank you. And?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve superintendent's recommendation to accept warrant, WG 17026, in the amount of $713,075.20. Hear the motion? Motion made and seconded, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do we need to take a vote on the, on the grants? I think we do, right?
Yes, if there's an action item.
Yep, sixteen dash seven eighty-six to sixteen dash seven eighty-seven. Make a motion. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is that it, folks?
No executive session. A motion for adjournment, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor? We are adjourned.
Thank you.